Okay, this is the In full media, April eighth, twenty twenty four. I'm sure that was copy, grab it into the marksman meeting, having posted on the city website. And so reports. Other colored departmental. And we'll start with The wonderful ways you are.
Thanks. I'm not trying to get a near pen, that's how they answer to be heard.
Right.
Alright, so my April twenty twenty four reports, we'll start off with programing at four fifty one Union. So that is the church where we do our K through two. Attendance jumped up a little bit this month with some new programmers. Joining our younger pepper school program. Excited for the regular participants to have some new kids to show them the space and the new can fit right in. We have beautiful racket that's been joining them at the church this month as one of our programs, I mentioned it last month that they were starting. Some of the kids have been learning a choreographed dance and song and they'll have the opportunity to perform a play that's happening at Hudson Hall on the eleventh of fall this week. And that's with Campville Village, Houston as well. They're really excited to be in the place of someone for the first time ever, they're a little nervous, but they're all doing a great job, so if you have a chance to check out that performance, I would suggest it. So the center is also going to be starting the first one of the other kids, they're doing a food prep class rather than a cooking class, so they can do some stuff outside of, you know, ovens and I think they might graduate up to the plastic knives that they use, but they're gonna start small and do some snack stuff with them. And circus is still a good hit for the kids at the church, they've gotten to go outside a couple of times, we had those couple of nice days that snuck in there. The kids love going outside, they're able to do some of the activities that they're not able to do inside the circus and hopefully with the nice weather arriving, hopefully staying, we'll be able to get outside a little bit more. Over at the youth center, so we said our rapid is wrapping up its program with the youth center and once noted makeup. They were doing two different age groups, the older kids and the younger kids, sort of age appropriate programming. We had a really great time working with them, but we're happy to say that they also enjoyed working with us and they're gonna be extending their time with us, they proposed a further program, so they're gonna stay with us through the end of the year and work with some of the kids that really shown an interest kind of combined those classes into one more in doubt cooking class. And we're also working with them to hopefully take a field trip to their garden with all the kids that have been participating, so they can see, you know, where the stuff is being grown. We were also able to get outside a couple of times again at the youth center, delivering one days, we did some truck playing outside, we also got to check out the flowers that we, I mentioned, we planted in the fall, some of those falls are starting to come up if you walk by the youth center. We also operation unite, we just partnered with Claremont to start a four age club and those kids in the four age club and then coming to the youth center and working with our kids there and they did a Planted micro greens class and then we had candy flowers out of edible violence and we're hopeful to have them back a couple of times before the end of the school year. And those flowers there are the ones that the kids, some of the ones other kids planted, so we should have more coming up soon. Um, I want to talk about some opportunity that been a stiff circus has brought to us, they're one of the most consistent, one of the favorite programmers that work with the kids. Everybody's really excited to work with us year round, they come to camp as well. And they teach on so many different levels, not just certain skills, but life skills, social skills, all kinds of stuff. And they have given us the opportunity to join them in New York City this weekend for a performance from Circus Omnium. I think they're impossible performance, they guys ten tickets for that, take some of the kids who participate regularly circus down to watch, are really excited for this opportunity. The performance, I looked it up online today, it's down in the city for a few weeks, so if you want to go see it, it'd be available. It's a lot of inclusion and a lot of different diverse ways of making circus relevant to a younger population, so really excited to have that opportunity. I'm thankful to be in the state. Team programming, our numbers are continuing to stay up, the kids are excited to be back in the building and hanging out. We're looking at not just higher number, the more participation from the students when they show up, so we're hoping to bring back Some more of the programs that have kind of leaned down when they weren't around. We also did a field trip over break, we took them to the movie club, so they got to see what the new releases, spend some time hanging out and we're hoping to continue doing those local field trips with the teens to give them, you know, a little bit of different option of what to do with their free time. Summer camp, registration is still going strong, we're getting to the point where we're gonna have to consider whether or not we close down certain age groups. We won't close down the entire form, just because one age group fills up, we'll just take that option off of the registration form. So for instance, we've had about forty five to fifty seven eight year olds and if all of those kids come every day, that's a lot of kids, so we might close down that age group, so When you sign out to register, if an age group has been closed and you don't see that option, that means that's closed, you'll have to call and see if there is an option for that child to be registered. Usually we're able to figure something out and that's very, very rarely, if I have to say no to someone, so. Again, if you call us at the youth center eight two eight zero zero one seven or stop by and the campus is July eighth to August sixteen, ninth to third. Over break, we did some staff developments, you know, we took some time to work at the youth center, we're playing shop up, playing programming, we did Interviewed over twenty of our summer camp counselor applicants and we still haven't interviewed them all. But in the middle of that, we were visited by the director of Coney County for a staff development evening where we let our creative sides out while learning what goes into teaching one of those classes to our students. They learn what the experience might feel like for our kids and have a best support our programmers when they come to work with us in that capacity. And then here's some of the artwork that his staff created. A talented group. And then registration and attendance, you'll see that registration went up for all three age groups, the average number Of students being served went up for K through two and teen, it dropped a little bit in three through eights and on the next slide, you'll see that I talked about that. It's likely due to the shift in programming offered outside of the youth center, so as the sports season shift or as whatever after school programs shift at the school they're being offered. We see a shift in our program attendees, so we'll see some kids Start to come much less often and then some kids kind of discover us as like, oh, my, I have winter sports, they're done, what I do this spring, they come to youth center. So hopefully apart. So last month, a couple of community members, me, Robert Davis and Dan Minor, they wanted to talk about restocking the lake. I had it restocked last year. I don't know if you guys drive by there very often and people are always fishing there, so if there's fish to be caught, they are caught. But they wanted to restock, I told them that we couldn't because we had a budget for it this year, but we could maybe do it next year. They asked about doing it themselves and I said the best way to do that would probably be to do a designated donation because you can't just put fish in the lake on your own. I thought that it was just gonna be them, but they rallied some community support, I got another large donation, I think the resolution is on the agenda for you guys to see today, if not just today, then next week. But they got that together, so we are restocking the pond, probably in a couple of weeks, some trout from the Hatchery that has been restocking since before I was here. We talked about doing a youth day where the fishermen show up, we have a bunch of fish fishing poles at the Oakdale Beach House that they're gonna prepare for us, make sure they're all in working order. And then we're gonna have a day where the youth can come down and either We might do it on the free fishing day so that they can come with their families and regardless of whether or not they have a license, they can fish and they might do something where they come It's more youth based and they can come with one of the experienced fishermen who has a license and then under age of fourteen would be one to purchase fans. So we're gonna try and get some kids back in the ocean, that I'm really grateful to them for putting this together, they brought a lot of excitement to the whole experience and I learned a lot about different kinds of trout, so that was fun. And we're in talks to hopefully bring my fishing derby back next year. And these are the names of all the individuals and businesses that don't even, so make this happen.
So I'm sorry, so the Oakdale is fish stopped, right, or stopped with fish, whatever. And then is it just the kids or anyone can fish there?
I don't fish, anyone with a fishing license can come down and fish when I really want. We need a bar fish and pull it, you know.
For sure.
Please don't go back. I'm sure they'll do it back. Then the next page, still against seasonal employment opportunities, I took out the counselors, we need them more counselors, please don't let anyone think they can apply to be a counselor. More than we could ever possibly use, still always looking for lifeters, we still need help in the bike shop. And a seasonal laborer as well, we're about to put out an opening for that, so we can get through Oakdale Park, it's nice all season. And then again, that's the last page here, just the best way to keep up with us, usually follow our Instagram, either review center or the park, I know we have our website as well, where you can access all the forms we have for all their treatment.
Have any questions for Captain London?
Great exposure, the kids will get arts study, I think that's fantastic, I was wondering, do you have any tutoring for kids and especially the teenagers, they Have the returns and a lot of testing coming up, so.
We offer tutoring and we have homework help for the kindergarten through eighth grade, after after school, there's thirty to forty minutes carved out just for homework help. Homework help gets a good attendance usually because kids can't finish it, the teens don't take us up as much on our academic support.
So who does it to that end though?
It's just our staff, you know, you, you know. We don't have any professional tutors coming in, but you know, can direct way to.
Well, you tell your staff can support that, yeah. And when is the kids gonna be down here in the summer?
That is up in the air right now, so we got the grant from Fisher County and we're looking at When makes the most sense, probably not this summer, the time when even actually getting money is, that was a lot of news to jump through as usual. And so we have to miss the weather that makes the most sense.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else from council? Do you still have the agreement with the school for summer program for waiting days?
We're waiting on a renewed contract, but we did have that conversation, we're hopefully actually gonna move from the elementary school to the high school. And that's actually really helpful because the elementary school has their program, they've got three different summer schools happening. There's so much happening in the elementary school and there's not much happening over at the high school, so it'll be easier for us to feel Like we have a little bit more freedom there and have a little more space.
They have to track football, the youth and everything.
Yeah, so like it's a weather series up, we can actually go on new stuff and then they will let us access the gym as well pretty regularly, so.
And when you're stocking, you know, way back when they had fishing derby, one of the big things was to go to trap, so I don't know if you could Find what however they did to go to trap, they put a couple of trout in it, they classed all its golden trout, the kids caught it, they got a special prize.
We're all about golden travel, we're having this conversation, so I don't worry, they will be there.
And then I was, we don't do fishing permits, do you, you know, we do.
It's, you just get the permit through the state, plenty of state permits will work.
Adults, yeah.
They have, anybody over the age of fourteen is supposed to have a fishing permit, so fish it up there.
Don't.
Or I mean.
I think Walmart has fishing for something.
Yeah, or you can go right online, you can buy that. If you really wanna fish though.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Thank you very much.
Anything you'd like to add, Sam?
Thank you, Liz, thanks to the staff, I've been able to work with you very closely and some staff development, just started going in and doing observations and then working with the staff. Providing my business and think about positioning and the staff is just incredible and so open and able to have conversations like I've always in terms of developing best Spaces and programming for kids and relationships with kids. And I did want to say that we have a pair of mergansers, not mergansers, ducks at Oakdale, which I've never seen at Oakdale Lake. So this, you wanna say, it's turning into a very special line of life refuge. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael is, yeah, yeah. Okay, let's get back to the rate to fire. Don't you poke the mic?
Four for the month of March, yeah, thirty six total calls, twenty seven were false alarms. Three different fires, two were buildings, one was crossfire made. Think both of those fires were mutually, one car accident, a gas leak, some bad electrical equipment, one animal rescue, it's different one.
Not ducks, right?
Uh. So we do it all. And then a couple of calls where we were dispatched and canceled and removed usually. Just an update on the firehouse lots that everybody booked last month. Code enforcement is gonna move in the end of the month, there were some pickups with his IT. His rooms are ready to go, DPW finished them. We're just waiting, Charlie Webb, before he retired, got the door framed in, we're just waiting for the door, they told me it was gonna be six weeks. And the companies have That were moving. Pretty much got their stuff all ready to go, they're finishing up. Everybody went out and lost some furniture the other day, so we're right along, so. Cool, that's, that's that, and we're still on. Haven't talked about it in a while since we ordered it, but the boat is still on track, it looks like they're gonna be starting that in the next Month to two months, so. And that's still on track as far as I know for delivery to October, so.
Thanks for saving us some money with your offices.
Well, they don't work out.
Yeah. Any questions from Captain London? Online, anybody, anybody at all? Okay, thank you, Nick.
Welcome.
Next, we have Chief Franklin.
Hello. So, no incidents on our body warm camera reports to indicate any disciplinary action was needed. Number of youth support incidents for March was zero, a number of arrests was fifty three for eighty one total charges. And then the tax report for what those charges are, if anybody has any questions. Number of emotionally disturbed person calls was seven, number of calls involving adult overdose was one. We got called to a residence and a thirty eight year old apparently overdosed on heroin. But the person that was with them administered three doses of Narcan, we didn't have to move on that call and then they were okay. So no further like EMS for that and then As you know, hopefully everyone knows that last month, we investigated two potential threats for the school district. And I just want to say how proud I am of the department for that, they've worked tirelessly to try to track down the sources of those. Unfortunately, you know, nothing happened with the schools and so we're just trying to strengthen our response to those incidents and Make sure that we have everything in order for us to respond to the schools in case anything does really turn into something else.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Therapy dog program, thank you for passing that last month. Our handler is in Florida now, he left yesterday. And the update I just received was that they do wanna keep him, so they do assessments with him without the handler To see if the potential is there to pass the course and so just got word that they wanna keep him, so Hopefully after this week, we'll introduce him to the public. And then continue along with training after that, but that's where we're at for that. Tomorrow starts our New York State accreditation. So tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, we'll be kind of busy with assessors, there's three different assessors coming from the state. Who will be at our department for the next three days to just go through all of our policies and make sure we're Up and above beyond all the standards that New York State sets out for us. And I have all the faith in the world that will pass with one colors, we've been, I think I mentioned it last month, we've been accredited since twenty nine, or two thousand nine. No, sorry, nineteen ninety nine, so and hopefully this will accredit us for the next five years, four years, actually, it's once every five years for a four year period. And then no accidents involving pedestrians last month.
Right.
And that's all I have.
Okay, question to Captain London?
Yes, thank you for keeping us safe, of course, and the schools. I was going, does your department check the street lights or who checks if there's a light out for example?
Streetlights or like traffic lights or streetlights?
Streetlights.
Streetlights, you need to go to the pole and there's a number on there and you contact national grid and enter the number.
You got that.
City doesn't have, at this point, city doesn't have a hand.
We still do The checks, the light checks and then we'll send those reports yearly to national grid.
Okay.
But.
But traffic lights are forces too.
Yeah. And so if there's an issue, you can let us know and we'll contact DPW.
Yeah, I'll talk, yes, great, thank you.
Anything else for you? Online, anyone? Monica?
Hi. Say, well, just one thing, sixth and Columbia, the green going the opposite direction, but it's a one way, so the.
Against the one way?
Against the one way, the green, I believe is out, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was curious about what kind of dog the therapy dog is.
So it's a mix, I can show you a picture if you'd like.
Yeah.
John, I was asking, I'll send you, show you the picture from, he's a shepherd, we think bully breed mix. He has kind of a face like a.
Is he have a name?
What's that?
A name?
His name is Ricks.
Old.
He just turned a year old in January. He's the sweetest little, little guy.
What's your name there, John Lee?
He is named after the late Phil Ripley, yes, he is. If you need us to change it in like Foundness and kids.
The lake, yeah.
Well, that's, I know that's our, that is our hope with him and he is in a home with children and he is like the sweetest, the sweetest little guy. My daughter was at the station last week when he was there and she literally crawled into his crate with him and he just laid there, so it's very promising.
So he's a baby there too?
Yes. He loves kids, he loves people and so that's all we could ask for right now, yeah.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Tom, did you want me to bring the, I'm sorry, I didn't walk up there, I wasn't sure with the picture.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Okay.
Anyway. Somebody wanna say something over here, I can't see. I think they're talking. Okay, thank you, Jude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, Rob Perry, are you there?
I am here.
Hey, we're here for truth.
All right. And Where are we here? Share. Bingo. Okay, sewer department, septic revenue for February was thirty two thousand five hundred. So we keep kind of moving resolutions through based on some of our larger projects. You know, we're getting a final number for the Union Street project and, you know, I've spoken to Heather already About getting some, we'll probably would just do a, either do a loan from general fund to cover it in the short term or include it as part of June's bonds. She hasn't figured out which, determined which one she wants to do yet, but at this point, you know, we're still, we've spent ten thousand on survey and probably another twenty or twenty five thousand on design and All the other regulatory stuff, so We do need to, to get a, a capital account established for that project to make sure we can, you know, keep it progressing. So there was a question, I guess, why we're talking Heather about the twenty five dollar increase and people were wondering about what it's for, well. You know, we did a two point two million dollar stormwater separation project last year. That had a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that was, had no match. That had a one point four million dollar grant that was sixty forty, sixty from the state, forty from the, the city. So at the same, so two point two million dollars worth of work, but still left the city with six hundred thousand dollars, now our annual budget's about one point five million dollars. So, you know, just to do it as a five year note was between interest and principles over a hundred thousand dollars. And that's why we raise these rates because as we continue doing these capital projects. You know, you know, we do everything we can to get as much grant money as possible, but in the end, there will always be something that's a local share. So that said. You know, she asked about, you know, well, if I know anything about what, what other rates are, so I just pulled this off the Greenport website, so You know, Greenport, so what I roughly did is I said, look, we got twenty two hundred units in our system. We put a million gallons a day into the system, so just straight lining it, that's four hundred and fifty five gallons a day Times ninety days or a quarter is forty thousand nine hundred fifty gallons. So in Greenport, you pay three fifty three per thousand gallons for water, you pay four fifty three per thousand gallons for sewer. This comes up to seven fifty six per thousand, you divide it by the thousand, multiply by the seven fifty six. And in Greenport does take seventy five percent of that, so you would get a bill for what we, an average unit Uses in Hudson, that they pay a hundred and fifty dollars a quarter for water and sewer. In Greenport, they'd be paying two hundred and thirty dollars, all right, so we're still well below, and I believe Stockport is even, the rates are even higher, so. I mean, yes, we did raise rates two years in a row, but that's not because We're just doing it for, you know, just for the fun of it, one, the rates are then way too low for way too long, we have zero fund balance For water and sewer. You know, you've got a nice healthy fund balance for the general fund and it's about thirty percent of your budget, it's about three million dollars and you would expect the same for the water and sewer, but the Budget, but that's just not the case and so rates, rates are gonna have to continue to raise as we do these capital projects. But that said, we're still fifty five percent lower than what our neighbors are paying for water and sewer. So, that's it, water department, we had The generator, you know, I discussed this last month, the control panel went, so, you know, we were using our lighting tower to do a distribution panel that For, we have these battery units on the PLCs which control the operations and we were using these to supplement that power in case the generator didn't fire. You know, we actually started the work, so This is the generator and what we have to do is, we have to get a portable five hundred KW generator that's wired into it and And what that does is, you know, the, the actual backup generator is offline while the guys are doing the control panel. This is one of the internal board that's gonna be replaced, so it's a, it's a sizable project and, but it's We don't have a backup generator, we don't have, we don't make water when there's power outage and we do lose, we do lose power, probably a dozen times a year or so. This regular payment, we did have a seismic event, earthquake last Friday, so On Saturday, we did a preliminary check on Friday, on Saturday, we brought the whole team out, walked everything. Make sure we don't see any types of cracks, fissures, any new seepage, anything like that. Everything checked out just fine and we reported that to Coney County Emergency Operations as well as the DEC and executive branch of the city. So, but as far as DPW, Nick Peril already kind of addressed on it, there's our man Charlie Webb, he's no longer a city employee, retired. Gracefully walked off into the sunset last week, he's still on payroll for a number of months because The TSA contract allows these guys to use sick time at the end of their, at the end of their career, so Although he's not there, not that we could replace him because he does the work of five people, he's just a bull, but You know, we can't even fill his vacancy for a number of months. So anyway, this was him starting to frame out for the new door in the police station, this is the finished product. Framed out, this is part of Craig's new office suite, this is what one of the offices looked like. You brought, you passed that resolution last month, so you got the flooring was done, DPW painted it. And so, you know, it looks cleaned it up, got rid of that god awful green that was in that office. And you can see, so Craig's office suite is, is ready, we moving him in, I believe, the last week of April. Before we get into stuff, so I just wanted to talk briefly, oh, the streetscape bridge, the DRI project is back on the street. This is the third time we've done it, but the scope was changed significantly, so We were optimistic we should make an award, we do have an extension from Department of State. So bid opening is scheduled for April twenty second at ten AM, that's City Hall. Just, you know, a brief discussion about snow, we didn't have a typical weather winter and that's because it was just Warmer a lot of times and sometimes we just had near misses, so, but we had a lot of events, you know, we had eight events in December, January, February, the yellow numbers, you see twenty five different events. And, you know, some of these were pretty high. And, you know, some of these were pretty high in, um. And totally, you know, we had one in December, it was almost four inches, one in January that was five inches, and these come from, uh, measurements at the sewer plant. There was some snow events, but we don't measure the snow that accurately, um. At the plant. So you see, there was like twenty five different events. Now, typically. Your, your average snow is a ten to one or a twelve to one, that means for every inch of. Rain, you get either ten inches or a foot of snow. Um, so it's easy to see that, you know, we had a storm a couple of weeks ago where we only got like an inch. Ish or so, uh, Washington County was three degrees colder than us, they got twenty inches. Um, we had that storm that everybody was forecasting to give us a foot. And then it took a hard right turn in New Jersey, went out to the ocean and we didn't get a flake. So. Uh, we did have a lot of close calls, but even with mostly rain, uh, you know, we did have a number of events. That we had to respond to, we still, if there's still some freezing conditions, we still have to go out and salt, the crews still had to do some cleanup, um. So there was, even though we didn't have any snow removal and any major storms, we still had a certain degree of activity. So. Um. Let's see, bless you. We have a, uh, this is the new, uh, kind of the lean to on the side of the salt shed. To store some of our plowing materials and whatever, and this is, uh, the concrete floor was poured around the roof. Uh, obviously you guys are in City Hall, so you know you're back, this is, when we took the benches, everybody's favorite benches out of storage. A lot of them had to be re-glued because probably hadn't been outside, you know, ever. Um, and they, they were out there for about three seasons or so. So, uh, hopefully they're holding together fine. The, um, we are starting with, uh, we were supposed to pave last fall, we, we put the bid out in July. And, but, you know, there were some conflicts with Mullen. And their work and streets that we wanted to do, so it ended up getting pushed off till this year. Uh, we are first up. In the season, uh, we start, I just, you go around, you'll see a lot of these excavations. So, when we use Chip's money, which this is all a hundred percent reimbursable from DOT. It's, we're required to put ADA rams for every street that we pave, so there's about twenty one of these. Total for the project, these just happen to be, I think this one's Frederick, uh. You know, this one's down by the, uh, by the hospital emergency room. So anyway, so, um, this is, you know, phase one starts on Monday with milling and paving Columbia Street between. What we refer to as the Triangle and Green Street. And, so we'll be passing out these handlers, uh, there'll be no parking lot on Columbia Street all of next week. Uh, residents or businesses, uh, traffic will be limited. To, on Monday and Tuesday, to just, uh, residents or, or people going to the businesses, we have coordinated. With the hospital, because on Wednesday, the road will be shut down, we'll be doing our final paving. Uh, between the Triangle and Green Street, they're gonna run their temporary emergency department through the front. Uh, they're aware of that, they're going to coordinate with all their vendors and let them know that they'll, they'll have to reschedule. Around that, we'll get this first phase done, uh, hopefully Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. Then we'll move to the other end of Columbia Street, new from the Triangle up to the town border and, um. Fairview Avenue extension. And so, uh, we do have, the county helped us out by putting a sign out on twenty three B. The Colorado will be putting signs out on Worth Avenue, Fairview Avenue and, uh, Route sixty six. And, you know, just basically, if, if you don't. If you don't live on Columbia Street or you don't have business on Columbia Street, I would strongly suggest you, uh, avoid the area entirely all of next week. Uh, there will be detours and there certainly will be delays, um, but this is what we do and this is the only way it, it happens. The, um. What else do we do? And then after we're done with this, then the next grouping will be over on five hundred Washington, Lake Franklin, uh, that kind of cluster over there. The, um. Just a, a quick thing about Mullen, Mullen, it should be wrapping up Warren Street in early May. Uh, at that point, we receive permits, the, uh, the next phase will be the. Four hundred block of Union Street, portions of Fourth Street and portions of State Street. And, um, you know, the reason that they're in here and, and, and operating with such fervor is because. These are just old mains, um, you know, they're prone to leaks. Uh, typically, you know, leaks and natural gas are not two things you want to use in the same sentence. So those are kind of a, th- these are a priority between them and, and the Public Service Commission. Uh, but hopefully they should be in and out, uh, by late summer and, uh, that will be the end of. Of this kind of work for, for some time, I would imagine. Um, we did have First Street Bridge, the new utility poles we set next week. Well, once they're in, the existing poles get removed and the, um, we're gonna start. Demoling the approaches to a bridge and get ready for the deck demolition that will take place at night and it will be later this month. Uh, we had some storm damage for, uh, one of the icy days, took some trees down in the old cemetery. Um, you know, our annual kind of project, we go around with a landscape architect and prune the street trees and. She gives the directions and our guys cut and, and chip and haul away. And, uh. It's the eclipse, this is, uh, not from here, my daughter lives in Dallas and so she sent me this picture. Um, so just, uh, happy eclipse day and I guess the next one for most of the United States is in twenty forty five, so. Um, I, I won't be talking to you guys then. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any questions from council members? Anyone else? Michael, you paying attention there, too?
No, I haven't seen him.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving right along, I was gonna, um, Gary had asked for. Because recently there've been some resolutions that were kind of leftovers from. Previous term. Gary had asked for other things, other projects that were sort of in the works that you may not know about. New people may not know about. And I was gonna do it tonight, but I would put that off till next week because we don't have Gary's on here. So we'll talk about that next week. Um, you heard from Rob about some of the DRI projects. Um, there are delays, uh, especially with the street connectivity because. Not only do things get more expensive, but, um. Yeah, it's just, it's just been very disappointing how, how much we had to decrease the project. Um, and of course Dunn is still in the, I, I, have we signed the lease yet, Michael?
Yes, um, with the, uh. Study period will end in June.
I'm sure, yeah. So everything's on track.
We're gonna go back, we, we, we've done study with.
Dunn Warehouse.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So what's, I'm sorry, I'm.
Are you, oh, okay, so that's. We're, we're in the process of leasing the building, of a developer. Okay. Instead of selling it, we're going for a, uh, a land. Excuse me, Michael?
It's a thirty year.
Thirty years.
So they're, they're gonna develop this?
Yes. Yep. Those are the other things, uh. I hope John doesn't treat it further detailed, other projects that we are in talks. Well, actually, we did get a very comprehensive and helpful email from Michael about the comprehensive plan, I hope you all. Have a chance to look that over. Uh, the consultants are doing the work first. And then the public will be more and more involved as time goes on. We'll talk about those things next week, bring everybody up to speed. Diana, we have five resolutions and I think they're pretty, I mean, all we have to do is introduce and get a second. And the first one is, um, you can do that in a corner.
Yes.
Okay. It's just not, it's not both of them.
Okay.
An introduction please in a second to. Uh, add Commissioner Bates, Donald A. Moore. Uh, introduction. Vicky, and a second.
Sure.
Who, who was up there first, second?
Okay, I'll take it.
And, the next, uh. Resolution is, uh, supporting the near state assembly incentive that's strong packaging reduction. And recycling infrastructure act and expand the state's bottle bill.
Oh, sorry.
That's what I'm doing. Are you have a question?
I'm too.
No, no.
Introduce.
And Rich and.
Tom. Yes, sir. So where, where did this resolution come from?
Uh, well, it came from the group, uh, I forget who sent it to me, um, uh, Academy Environmental Group. Um. There should have been, uh, I, I, maybe there is, um, let me see. Uh, maybe on the website, some supporting documents, but it's.
No, I mean, I've, I've been following, that's why I'm wondering where it came from, cause.
Well, I, I put it up in general.
Okay, yeah, yeah, cause I know our, these, these, our assembly member is.
Oh, yeah, both.
Yeah, they're both on board and, and both a part of it and it's getting close to being. Successful, so that's why I think it's good timing that we do this and.
Right.
Because my experience is that, you know, we lost, we had a bottling in, on Healy Boulevard. And, um, we lost that business because they just couldn't keep up.
Yeah.
And the other one that I know of is Columbiville and they're, they're on thin ice because of. So this, this bill will assist them in surviving.
Right, and both, uh, Diddy Barrett and Michelle Vinci are saying they're supportive.
Yes. So we, we, we had a bottling on Healy that we lost because.
They couldn't make it work.
They couldn't make it work, yeah. Ork used to do it a long time ago, but. Yeah, it's because, you know, you get five cents and, yeah, it was, it wa- it was just very difficult. So this, 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 doesn't this increase, it's like ten cents or something like that? Yeah. Yes. So CAC was gonna endorse this, but it got. Here faster than the CAC could endorse it, so you got. Yeah, I mean, cause it, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different things because, yeah, you increase the rate, plus that you get. You know, the more bottles you collect, the more you get in volume and everything too, so, yeah, it's, it's definitely gonna benefit and, you know, the community and. And everyone involved. I don't think it's, the rate has gone up since eighty something when they.
Yes.
What was that? I don't think the rate has gone up since eighty something when. Oh, yeah, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, right. Operations on healing, they were very particular and, and they wouldn't. And there was a lot of questions about how, how they would, uh, count the bottles. So there was a lot of.
It's not really our concern, I mean, appreciate your.
Yes. Well, it's something the public was exposed to. You should know that.
It, well, they didn't last long, did they?
Did they, well, that's, there you go.
Okay, moving right along. The next resolution includes a sub-license between Hudson, Slukup and the schooner Apollonia. This is a repeat. License. Uh, Chris, does it make many changes? I don't think so.
Yeah, this is just to continue, it's, it's just a, a new year, a new term for it, if there's no substantive changes.
Thank you. Introduction in second please. Thank you. And a little, uh, opportunity here for other people to do it. Do you have a second one?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So much.
And likewise. The same one twice? For some reason. I have the same one twice.
I'm sorry, it's still, that's, that's just like a version, but like a sublease of what we passed.
Yes. They're, 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 they've gotten managed.
Right.
So they.
Sounds like something to. When it's a, when it's a long-term lease, we have to do a, a something different with it.
I think.
Oh.
Uh, there's a little mistake here, but since, there was supposed to be a second sublease, oh, wait. Now I see, this, this is a mistake here. There, there is a second sublease and that's for the, um. The third. So can I have an introduction and a second to that? How about the other Richard?
Sure. We already passed the other one, so this is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And lastly. Um, we have a couple of donations. A. Fire department had to check from public sale auction house in the amount of four hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents. Introduction in second. Richard. And a. Resolution accepting a donation to the youth department. From Robert Davis and, oh, this is the, um.
Fishing yard.
Fishing yard.
Well, but stocking.
Well, it's just.
No, stocking. And for. Here was the questions.
And he's gonna get the ride.
And the last resolution. Is about extending the. Hold on one second. This is allowing us to extend the tax law. Uh, under home rule notice. So this does actually, let's see.
Tom, can I just jump in real quick? Yes. What this is doing is it's essentially supporting the request for the home rule on, um. Resolution for the lodging tax. Yep, because what has to happen is that before we can actually pass the true home ru- rule resolution. We have to have the, um, the legislative bill numbers from the Senate, and I know that there have been draft letters requesting that. And that this resolution is to support those letters going to the. Cities, uh, state representatives, so that we can get the bill drafted and put in place for it.
Got it, thank you. Because this has to go through the state.
Correct.
And the state has to approve it.
Yes.
Vicky, and a second. It's just their authorization rule, not to actually pass the taxing.
But. Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sorry, listen, so, I'll listen to the residents.
Okay, so this is to authorize a rule and then after this goes through, then the actual tax?
Yeah, we're, we have to go on the tax.
They do go on the tax, but we won't be voting that next week.
No, if, if I could just jump in, what's gonna happen is that there's gonna be a request to the state legislators. To prepare essentially a bill that will allow us to increase, allow the city to increase the tax. Then what's gonna happen is that there's going to be a formal home rule request. That goes, that gets attached with that, that goes to the state legislature. If the state legislature passes all of that. Then we can go ahead and actually, uh, uh, pass the local law that will amend the lodging tax to increase. Does that make sense? There, there's several steps in, in play.
So, thank you, thank you. And you had mentioned last time that there'd be like a clawback or something like that with the county. But is county actually passed, is the county gone through this process as well or no?
I assume they have, I've heard they were voting on, I don't know if it passed, but the thing is, that's a separate. Um, what happens is, in some counties, or in some cities. Throughout the Hudson Valley, you pay the city tax plus the county tax.
Right.
Work hard enough not to do that.
Right, but, I mean, did they pass it so that we're parked out?
Yes, I mean, if they have, if they pass it, we'll park out, yes.
Yeah, cause we don't see anything on the calendar.
We don't wanna be part of it.
So I can go to the county website and look to see.
If they pass it, it's voted on like two weeks ago.
And it's, it's with the exception of the city of Hudson.
Right. That's it. Considering with an eight percent for people who.
Mm-hmm.
Can you?
Right.
Okay, assuming they were, were they, Michael, four?
The numbers four.
We could board five.
No, no, it's not a problem, at least. Okay, on your desk still is the filming law, if you read. The last legal committee, they're still talking about the filming law, the. Uh, vacancy law and the. What's the federal committee charter? Oh, yeah, formula. So those aren't ready yet, but they're ready soon. So that leaves us open for new visits, council members, anything, like, take your time. Say or ask or whatever.
I just wanna say that we're having, uh, the housing, the county housing advisory board through the counties having, uh. I just wanna say that we're having, uh, the housing, the county housing advisory board, through the counties, having a tenant landlord forum at the Firehouse on Wednesday, six to eight. It's gonna be a four, like, five or six panelists that discuss, uh, evictions, home safety, home insurance, uh, sectioning, uh, a lot of things that are, are very important for, uh, the housing, uh, rental and landlords.
When is the opening?
Wednesday, six to eight at the Firehouse.
Yeah, this Conservation Advisory Council has received a grant, uh, or award, actually, for, um, five thousand dollars because the city has implemented five heat pumps throughout the city, so it trapped it all. Uh, the CO, CO Department actually sends them a report that says that, once we do, once we've implemented and it's done by heat pumps, the New York State Climate Smart Communities, CEC, I don't know, all these factors, um, they give you five grand, they're like, here's five grand. Um, so there's no matching faring, so no anything else that's probably, but there are certain things you can use it for. Uh, one of the things, other communities have user boards for light bulb exchange program, where you can turn in an incandescent light, and you get a free LED light to help save energy. So that's what we'll be using that for. And so there'll be like a light bulb exchange program going on in the future. That's clear. There might be more, actually, there is more money out there, so there's other projects that could happen as well, once we clear it work.
And we keep increasing our.
We keep increasing about, I mean, there, there are specific projects, such as, you know, electrical, uh, lawn maintenance equipment. That's one thing, you know, more electric car charger stations, that's another project, um, but the funds have to be used for specific projects. Um, yeah.
Thank you. Anything to meet in the public? Put any hands up. Okay. What we can do to.
Make demolition.
Second.
I think we can go, it's a very significant, uh, one of them.
Yeah, and don't read, you got some ones.
Let's do it. There's, there's no, let's see, let's see that.
Yeah, that's our, um, guidebook.
You know, LEDs work for the ice.